I'd just like to welcome everybody to the regular session of council for February 28th, 2023. And just, just for all you folks out in Zoom land there, we've had some technical difficulties with respect to our committee of adjustment. So we weren't able to live stream it. But we will be able to live stream our regular session of council. And I just want to remind everybody that that will be live streamed. Having said that, I'll now call the meeting to order. I'll look for an adoption of the agenda for February 202023 to be adopted as presented. Moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Pinnell. Questions, comments, all in favor? Most motions carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest of general nature thereof? Seeing none. Moving on. Rising report from closed session. Closed session meeting pursuant to section 239 of the municipal act scheduled for 1:00 PM to discuss personal matters of what identifiable individuals, labor relations matters, instructions to be applied to negotiations, and an educational session on the topic of bylaw enforcement. I'll look for a motion for the rising report from closed session. Deputy Mayor Calver, councillor Norrie, any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? And I'll report that council rise and report from closed session and further that all recommendations made within the closed session are hereby adopted. I'll report that in closed session tonight, council received for information two confidential reports from the C A O pertaining pertaining to labor relations and personal information about identifiable individuals, received information pertaining to contract negotiations, and gave directions to staff, and received for information a training session on the topic of bylaw enforcement. We have another, an additional recommendation. I'll look for a motion for that. The council authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign a six month extension to a license agreement with Via Rail of Canada. So I'll look for a motion. Moved by councillor Pinnell, seconded by councillor Hicks. The council, I guess we'll call for the vote first, won't we? Yeah, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. And the authorization was that council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign a six month extension for the license agreement with Via Rail of Canada. And further, that council direct staff to analyze the costs and benefits of the agreement, report back to council within a six month period. Five point one, public meeting under the planning act. For a motion for the resolution to convene a public meeting. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by deputy mayor Calver. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Michael, did you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you, worship. This is the microphone working. Can you hear me okay?
It's, it's working on the stream.
Okay. Yes, thank you, worship. This application was received from Ms. Chantel LeBlanc, and it pertains to 3271 County Road 41, the former Robin Church. And the application is to rezone the property from community facility to Hamlet Residential to allow for the conversion of the church to a single detached dwelling. The applicant has intention to also establish a detached accessory structure wherein a art studio would be the predominant use of it, in addition to some storage associated with the with the residential use of the property. Staff have conferred conferred with a number of agencies on the application. There are no concerns from the agency's perspectives. I would like to just point out that typically where there is a change in land use, essentially a change in how the land was being used and what it's proposed to be used for, where there's a, for example, a commercial or industrial use change to a residential use, there would be the need for a record of site condition and certificate of property used to be issued. In this instance, though, the ministry has built in a specific exemption for the conversion of a church to a residential property. So the applicant does not need to go through the performance, which would be quite costly and quite time consuming. So I just wanted to make make council aware of that recent change that the ministry has alerted alerted us to. But we did receive one, one comment from a neighboring property owner. We did, we circulated to to all residents with our all property owners within 120 meters of the subject site. We received one comment from Mr. Chad Shannon at 3249 County Road 41. And the comment was that he is opposed to the rezoning proposal for the art gallery. That was a verbal comment made to staff nearing the end of the day today. That's the all the information that I have at this time. We don't know exactly why it's being being opposed. However, I would just like to note for councils information that when there's a, you know, any, any essentially residential zone would is allowed to establish a home occupation. So in this instance, the Hamlet Residential is allowed to establish a home occupation on their property. And an art studio and art gallery would would fall into that permitted use. So it would be permitted as of right. And unfortunately, I don't have any additional information with regards to the opposition to that aspect of the proposal this evening. But this is a public meeting. If there are any comments or concerns from the public, we'd like to hear them now and then take that back and take that into consideration when when forming a recommendation for council at a future meeting.
Thanks, Michael. And I know that the the applicant Chantel LeBlanc is here in the body of the council chambers. Did you want to say anything, Chantel, or you? I know that you're here to support the application. Did you have anything to say or add that you'd like council to hear?
Well, I just worked, I don't even remember your first name.
Yep, sorry. Come on up, come on. Yeah, come on up, Chantel, and we'll give you a microphone there.
First of all, I'm really excited about this project. It's kind of like my retirement project. I would really like to have an art studio in my backyard and and live in, you know, this area. So far, it's been really enjoyable to meet the people and to interact with whoever I had to interact with. I'm not sure why this person is opposing to an art studio in my backyard. Maybe we'll find out more. I'm not sure if that's a valid position. I'm quite happy that there is no other obstacles to this rezoning other than it wasn't there supposed to be. You had mentioned in the in the document that there was maybe some cars.
Those from the conservation. That's, that's can be addressed at a later.
Okay, great. Okay, so that's all I want to say. I'm not sure who can say yes or no, or but I'm.
There won't be any decisions made tonight, Chantel. Tonight is just simply the the public meeting to hear all the comments, whether it's for or against the rezoning. So just hang tight. Does council have any questions of Chantel or Michael? Councillor Pinnell?
Thank you through your worship. Chantel, is is the premise now run from cistern? Or do you have a drilled well there?
It's a cistern, and I'm planning to drill a well. I think that would be a good option as opposed to having a cistern.
Okay, thank you.
Through your worship. Just a question. What medium do you work in? Is it, is it a kiln? Does it involve a kiln? Or is it painting?
It's stained glass.
Oh, okay. Yeah, glass. Okay. And how big would the workshop be?
Well, I'm going to review the allowed percentage, but it's 10% of the overall, I think, lot. So it could be eight, nine hundreds, like the size of a big garage, I guess. I don't know, something like that. But taking in consideration the setbacks and the allowances and everything.
All the rules.
All the rules, yes.
Any other questions for Chantel or for Michael? Seeing none. And I don't see anybody in in the body of the council chambers speaking against. But is there anybody here speaking against the application? Seeing none. Thank you, folks. There's no further questions, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Moved by councillor, seconded by councillor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, folks. Presentations. First up will be the drinking water quality management presentation. And I believe that Christie will be doing that one. Just can we bring the microphone out of closure, Christie? We're having trouble picking it up. So thanks. We're just gonna check the microphone, Christie. Folks are watching or having a hard time here. So sorry.
I'll restart this slide. So this diagram is showing the framework around our drinking water systems. The municipal drinking water license is essentially our approval to operate the town's drinking water systems. The drinking water license is issued by the Ministry of Environment and must be renewed every five years. There are five components surrounding the drinking water license, and they are directly linked and are required as part of that licensing. So we have our operational plan, which I did know earlier. It was prepared by the town in accordance to the policy. And then the operational plan kind of leads to our accreditation. So we are accredited to operate our drinking water system. It's granted by a third party who verifies that our quality management system meets the requirements of the standard. So this is completed through an audit process. We have the audits once per year. And then we have a reaccreditation audit that takes place every three years, which kind of digs a little deeper into our processes and such. A permit to take water limits and regulates the volumes of raw water taken from sources within Ontario. In our case, so for San Hur Shores Drinking Water System, we have a permit to take water for Lake Ontario. And then for our ALDA full drinking water system, we have a permit to take water from Lake Ontario. But we also have one for the Napanee River that we use only as our alternate or backup raw water source. And then there's a drinking waterworks permit. So they replaced preexisting environmental compliance approvals, and they're specific to drinking water. They essentially permit us to establish or or alter certain things within the system. And then the financial plan. So that's a long term strategic plan developed to ensure financial sustainability of our drinking water systems. And usually the duration of that is a six year forecast for that. So all members of municipal council are encouraged to review the summary guide. I believe it was linked in the presentation. If not, we can provide it a later date. But there are also more in depth courses available to help you as members of municipal municipal council better understand your roles and the impact they can have on our drinking water systems. As per section 19 of the Safe Drinking Water Act, there are many specific requirements for members of municipal council as you all exercise decision in in making decisions over our drinking water systems. So we have to exercise a level of care diligence skill in respect to the system and are expected to act honestly, competently, and with integrity with the view of ensuring the protection and safety of the users of the municipal drinking water system. So drinking water quality ultimately requires a commitment from all of us, from municipal governments to our boots on the ground drinking water operators. And as mentioned earlier, it is very important to educate yourselves on the statutory standard of care requirements. And again, just a better understanding of our drinking water systems, how they work in our community. And this will hopefully help you better understand the legislative requirements that come with it. And then finally, you're not expected to be experts. It's important to know where to go or who to ask when you have questions specific to drinking water. But members of municipal council should be aware of the standard of care requirements and just to be make to ensure that you're making informed decisions that are related to our drinking water in Greater Napanee. That's a lot of information. And try to keep a high level. Did you have any questions on that? Or?
Is there any questions for Christie? Thanks, Christie, for the presentation. It's something that's very important to every municipality in the province. And obviously up to ours, but I think there may be a couple of questions. I think Deputy Mayor Calver, did you have a question?
Great report, by the way. We used to, years ago, in my business, we used to get a breakdown of Ontario, you know, the water qualities. Where do we stand as far as municipalities with quality of our drinking water?
Are you speaking to like our municipal treated drinking water?
Yes.
I don't know the the how you would go too, too in depth with that in comparison. But we did just have our municipal drinking water inspections. I believe they were presented to council not too long ago. And we did have a final inspection rating of 100% for both systems. So as far as, you know, safety of the drinking water, we're meeting a lot of those requirements or all of those requirements.
We've still maintain a very high quality of drinking water.
That's correct.
For our water board.
Councillor Hicks?
Through your worship. Christie, can you provide us with that document taking care of your drinking water?
I will.
If you could send it up tomorrow, that'd be great. Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Christie? Seeing none. We'll look for a motion to note and receive the presentation from Christie with respect to the drinking water quality management for the town of Greater Napanee. Moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Pinnell. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. 6.2 Bay of Quinney Regional Marketing Board, the 2022-2023 fiscal year update. And I believe we have Mr. Doug Stevenson here today to speak to us with respect to that. Thanks, Doug.
You bet. Well, thank you so much, Mayor Richardson, members of council staff, for having me here tonight to present an update on our 2022-2023 fiscal year. And, you know, this is a regional partnership. And we were so excited when Greater Napanee came on board officially in in April 2021. And it's really been excellent to anchor the east side of the North Shore, that Bay of Quinney, you know, that we're out there promoting every day. And it's yourselves, municipality of Brighton, over on that west side, city of Belleville, city of Quinney West, the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinney. And you also see the Quinney Home Builders Association on there, really part of that resident attraction mandate. And have been working with us for a long time on that. We're guided and governed by a board of directors. Very excited to have Angela on our board as your representative on behalf of Greater Napanee. And she's been terrific so far to be bouncing ideas off of and having discussions with. So thank you for giving her to us so that she can give us her time. And as you'll see there, each of those partners from the previous slide has a board representative as well. So if you're paying into the organization, you got a representative around the table. And we're able to round out the board with at large members also based on our bylaws. Here's the team right here. It's not just me. It's the four of us working on a daily basis to promote this region. So Anna Freyberg, our digital marketing manager, managing all the socials, all the blog content across our websites. Jen Achilles, who's our manager in media and design, she's designing our discovery guide, our maps, anything brand related, the website. And then Trevor Norris, who's business development. So he's working more in that corporate travel trade, sports tourism, or new projects that we've got to get up and running. You know, while I got the staff slide up here, these folks are very important. I got to mention these folks as well. And, you know, we got Kylie and we got Annie in the room. There's not a week that goes by probably where we're not in touch with these two folks. And they do an immense amount of work for this regional partnership as well. And so it's just awesome, you know, on a weekly basis, when we got questions or we want to throw ideas around or we want to plan something, you know, we can reach out and have discussions with them. They're a big asset to this team also. Let's talk about funding. So this fiscal year, working with budget of just over $900,000, had discussions with everybody around this table about how that funding works. And so as you're aware, Greater Napanee pays us $1.55 per capita. So $1.55 per person, based on currently the 2016 census for a total of $24,632. It's 2.6% of our funding for this fiscal year. So what do you do? What do we do with your money? Well, one of the things that we try and do is put it back into the community. So you'll see right here, we actually put 92% of that $24,632 right back into Greater Napanee through stakeholder supports, things like our Bay of Quinney marketing grants I'm going to speak about in a future slide, our experiential marketing program and supports, and also some work that we did with the Chamber of Commerce on some marketing and product development. So $22,825 invested back into the community from the funding you provided us from. We also like to show how we affect economic impact through return on investment. And so I'll talk about this in a later slide. But we're able to show through our marketing estimated economic spending over $3.4 million from what we put out into their overnight activity worth over $320 million. And when we talk about overnight activity, we continue to see some really strong results. And so you'll see here from this slide, and we receive CBRE National Hotel data. So they are the leading firm at providing national hotel data all across this country. And so we see a 9% increase in overnight accommodation activity in this region over 2021. That's exciting coming out of COVID. But maybe even more exciting is actually the the middle piece there, where we're now seeing growth compared to pre-COVID activity. So 3.4% growth when we look at 2019 versus 2022, we're going in the right direction. And like I said, when we look at the overnight spending and what's being spent in this region as a result of people staying in our accommodations, it's worth over 300 million bucks, which it's worth over 300 million bucks, which is big business for this region. Let's talk about marketing and management. And so, you know, with our team of four and working in collaboration with our partner staff, we're working across 38 marketing management tactics. Some of them you see, some of them you'll never see. They're not targeted at you. And these are things largely driven by our marketing campaigns. So we have what's called our always-on marketing campaigns, our award-winning Take-A-Drive campaign, Take-A-Drive, meet us here in the Bay of Quinney, meet us here in Greater Napany. And so over 3.2 million impressions delivered through this campaign through this year. Also, something that's interesting, you know, we're always trying to measure, how can we measure that ROI? So because so many people have their geolocation turned on on their cell phones, we can actually see and measure over 32,000 people physically entered after clicking or seeing a Bay of Quinney ad, what we call conversion zone. So that might be the downtown core, that might be accommodations properties, that might be an attraction. And when we apply a formula to that, we can estimate that spending generated by Bay of Quinney marketing ads through campaigns like this one are worth over $3.4 million to this region. Obviously, we're operating across multiple websites. You know, really, it's about content, it's about storytelling. That's our job. And that's what we're working with Kylie and with Annie on to get out there every month is stories about stakeholders in Greater Napany. Why this is a great place to live, why this is a great place to visit, and showcasing individuals that are a part of that. Another thing that we do very actively is what we call workforce attraction. So you know, we're trying to attract people to fill those skilled workforce jobs that we know our major employers have. So just some screenshots here of our quintejobs.ca website and marketing engine where we are putting jobs out there on a weekly basis that pay 50K or more in an effort to attract people here to fill those positions. Of course, we're active on digital media and social media, just like everybody else, communicating with an audience of over 60,000 on a weekly basis. And it's the same as our websites. It's that content, it's storytelling, it's talking about the people in Greater Napany that we want to share with the rest of the world. And our newsletters as well, and we have two of them. One is a tourism newsletter, the other is a stakeholder newsletter. So you know, one features all that visitation content, the other is about funding, it's about industry opportunities. And we're communicating with a core of over 10,000 through both of those newsletters. But we can't be the only ones telling these stories. We're biased, right? People look at us, they know we're going to be celebrating this region. So part of our job is also utilizing the budget to pay third-party organizations to tell these stories. Just like these ones here up on the screen like this, a micro winery piece that was from a Mississauga print publication or some of the work we've been doing, especially with the Kingstonist since we were able to start partnering with Greater Napany because Kingston is really a strong market for us. And we also work with what we call travel media and influencers. So these are individuals or companies who have, you know, travel websites or blogs or high social media followings. We pay them, we bring them here, we give them an itinerary, ask them, will you go around to these places in Greater Napany? Will you talk about these places for us? And this is one of the best ways that we actually can grow our following. All these folks are communicating with their own core following, people who probably don't even know about us or follow us. So it's been a great way for us to grow awareness about our communities and about the Bay of Quinney brand. Another thing that we do throughout the course of the year, Anna Freyberg, our digital marketing manager that I talked about, she'll meet with Kylie and Annie, reps from the chamber on a quarterly basis and just say, what's going on? What do we got to be talking about? What do we need to prepare for? What are you going to be talking about? What do you maybe need photography or video for to help you market what's going on? Whether it be events or businesses that are opening or what have you. And so through the course of the year, we'll go out and we'll photograph either from the sky or from the ground, different locations. And we have those in an online repository that staff use, stakeholders are free to use at any time. Our discovery guide that I hope folks have seen, and this is just a few of the screenshots of the one that we are going to be printing and publishing and getting out there, 20,000 copies across the province in about a month or so. And this is something that we get out through Ontario Tourism Visitor, Visitor Centers, but also very heavily through our accommodations, our visitor centers here locally and high-traffic areas. We got a Bay of Quinney map too, same thing. When you go to the hotel, some people love a paper map, they can write all over it. We also make it available digitally, bayofquinney.ca/explore. There's over 700 businesses that are relevant to a tourist featured on there. Based on different categories, you can even create your own itinerary, send it to yourself or print it off. And what we call out-of-home advertising, we're using as well to grow that Bay of Quinney brand. So for example, if you've been to Prince Edward County in 2022, we acquired four billboards there. And this is part of a new strategy that we're starting. We're looking to acquire some in Kingston as well, just to get that Bay of Quinney brand out there. And you'll see at the bottom, a new gate one entry rap that we have at the CAA Arena in Belleville. Just trying to get that brand out there in front of as many people as we possibly can through those high-traffic areas. And our Bay of Quinney marketing grants, which I mentioned off the top. So this is something we started in during COVID-19 to support small businesses who were all hurting, had no budget. But it's something we continue to do even as we come out of the pandemic, because we've seen what it does for small businesses. We've also seen what it does if we're able to support businesses to do more marketing. That means more of us are out there talking about Greater Napany, talking about that Bay of Quinney brand and ultimately attracting people here. So this year, 6,100 marketing grants awarded to four Greater Napany projects. And again, we'll be offering this program as part of the business plan this coming year as well. Our experiential tourism development, so just quickly on that, a shift in the way Canada is doing tourism is trying to develop experiences. So immersive things where you're learning, you're participating in that activity and you're taking away something, knowledge, but also something physical. And so we have been working with Wind Farms and Sarah launched an agritourism experience as part of our first round of experiential tourism development in 2022. And this is a project that we're continuing and Annie's been a big part of as well. And we're going to be launching a new suite of experiences in 2023 as part of this. And some recognitions, nice to be recognized. And we were very fortunate to be nominated by the Economic Developers Council of Ontario for a program we did for Belleville and downtown Trenton, downtowns. But at the end of the day, it's about this, it's about investment in the community. It's about return on investment and generating spending throughout the region. So I just want to talk quickly before I wrap up about some next steps for us. So of course, continued marketing that's going to deliver economic spending. We're actually in the middle of a website redesign. So a website that brings all of our assets together is more brand-forward and what we think will do a stronger job of getting those Bay of Quinney messages out there. Spring marketing campaigns, and we're just developing some Kingston content right now that, again, we're going to hope to to help drive activity in Greater Napany. Drafting our 23, should be 2324 business plan and budget. And Angela was part of that draft presentation yesterday, and that's going to be put into market as of April 1. Had this discussion with a few of you related to municipal accommodation tax. And I'll talk a bit more about that in a second because we see it as an opportunity. And then the other thing that I just want to put on everybody's radar is, you know, we're interested in continued partnership. And I know that the partnership's going to continue through this year as per the budget. But I want to continue to be in touch and come back to council and have discussions with council about continuing to partner with our organization on this regional mandate to drive this kind of economic activity. Once we get into your 24 budget, your 25 budget, your 26 budget. And that's the same thing that I'm doing right now with our other municipal partners. And presented a few weeks ago to Brighton, last week to Quinney West, in a couple of weeks to Belleville. And we're trying to secure actually multi-year deals with those communities as well. So just quickly, as I mentioned, we see a real opportunity with respect to municipal accommodation tax. And we've been able to work with city of Belleville and city of Quinney West to implement this and support them in that implementation. And if you remember back on the budget slide, it's been something that's enabled us to really grow as an organization. And so I just want to put this on the radar because it's really an income potential that doesn't cost the municipality because it's typically a 4%, actually Brighton implemented at 5%. Fun fact, typically a 4% that somebody pays when they stay overnight somewhere. And so, you know, for the municipality to implement with motels and hotels, there's potentially a hundred, a couple of hundred grand out there for product development, for continued tourism marketing development. And of course, we would like to be a part of that and help to support that. So happy to take any questions and want to thank everybody for listening to my presentation.
Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it. As always, there's a lot of energy in your presentations and we can appreciate that. Is there any questions or comments for Doug before we let him go here? Counselor Penel, go ahead.
Thank you. Through your worship, Doug, I just want to thank you very much for coming tonight.
You bet.
We had a great conversation on the phone the other day. I always enjoy your presentations, your enthusiasm. And hopefully we can continue this relationship in the future.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
I appreciate your enthusiasm, Doug. Even when you talked on the phone the other day, my wife said, you just sat up.
Sorry.
But I'm particularly interested in seeing how much there's going to be more marketing towards east of Napany. I know like Quinney Marketing Board, I mean, everybody seems to have that Quinney in their head, the name. But my experience has been that we're lacking some from coming from the east to Napany. And I just, it's something that I'm interested in and I'm glad to hear you mention that. You know, you were trying to do more Kingston.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Counselor Hicks?
Through your worship. So when we met yesterday, I actually asked that question, if you remember about the signs. So at point, I mentioned to Doug that when I was driving to Belleville on Sunday, the signage, because we were late to the game. So last year was our first year and they already had the signs in place. But I believe that's being looked into to move the westbound signage to the other side of Napany so that it's more visible, so that when you're getting to Napany, the branding is already there. We're already part of that and to capture that. So, and I'm interested to see if you have an answer for Ron at the next meeting as to where the sign is. He seemed to think it was in Newcastle, which is way far.
It's a bit far, but yeah.
But yeah, so it's, we're working on pulling from there. Yeah.
Great. Counselor Norrie?
Just quickly, I don't know if you're aware, if the MTO ever proves that we're supposed to have one of the pixel signs on the 401 behind the arena.
Yes, I'm aware.
Do you have any thoughts of putting something on that sign, if and ever when it happens?
Yeah, through the mayor to Counselor Norrie. I mean, you know, we're here with content, right? That's our job. So certainly if it's a platform, and I think there was even a plan maybe to sell some advertising there, that'd be something we'd be interested in. And whatever we can do to support staff and support the community to get, you know, visuals out there that makes sense, we want to help.
Great, thanks. Any other questions?
No, thanks, Doug.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Doug.
Thanks so much, Mayor.
It's always a pleasure. I'm sure that we'll probably be in contact with you, and I know Ange will on a very regular basis. But thank you very much and we appreciate what you do for us.
You bet. Thanks a lot.
I'll look for a motion to vote receive Counselor Penel, the presentation of Doug Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor, opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Next up is deputations. I don't see that we have any registered deputations, but I do believe that we have a gentleman here tonight that would like to do an unregistered deputation. So come on up, George, and just give us your name when she come up. And if you sit in front of the microphone, it makes it a lot easier for us to hear.
Per the procedure by law, we do need a motion from council to accept a deputation.
Great. Okay, so because we need a motion of council, I have two-thirds of council to agree to hear what you have to say, George. So what we'll look for, do we need a motion or we just need a? Need a motion? So we'll look for a motion to receive the information of Mr. Rare as an unregistered deputation. Moved by Counselor or Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Counselor Martin. All in favor, opposed, motions carried. First step's over, George. We have the ability to hear what you have to say. So just, just, just briefly, I just want to give you the rules of engagement here. Being an unregistered deputation, we only have about three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. I know that you've sent some information to us with respect to what you want to say tonight. I'm assuming that you'll probably stay within those boundaries. Having read the information, I can't guarantee it, we're going to be a lot of help to you. But we're here to listen and go ahead and I'll, I'll give you a wave when we get close to the three minutes. How's that sound?
How do I address you?
You can address me as Mr. Mayor or your worship or Terry. I don't care. You can do it whichever way is best for you. How's that sound?
Perfect. Mr. Mayor? So anyways, I was put under some accusations a couple, almost a couple of years ago. But it really didn't have any merit to what I'm talking about. So when you're put in custody and you're ordered by a justice or a judge, right, to satisfy that order, you have the privilege and the right to attend your attorney's office without being, having the meeting compromised. So if you're removed from that privilege or that right, Canadian right, actually, so you weren't able to satisfy the order to the Crown or to the Majesty of Canada. And it's illegal for police to remove you from that because there is no reason to do so. How could anybody remain law-abiding in Canada if you were guilty or not? How could someone be ordered by a justice or a judge to satisfy an order and be removed while attempting to satisfy that order? It's pretty scary because criminal or not criminal, guilty or not guilty, if you're ordered by a judge, you respect that. And you're to do your utmost best to satisfy that order. And I did everything I could, but I was illegally removed from that appointment. I don't need it anything longer.
And in fairness to you, George, that's, that's pretty much the information that we received through, through your email. And I guess, I guess I'm going to ask counsel first. Does counsel have any questions of George with respect to what he's had to say? Counselor Penel?
Thank you, worship. I don't, I don't have any questions, but it looks like he has some documents to hand out and I'll gladly take that. Is that, is that for us?
I believe that's probably the email you have is, is the information that you probably sent.
I actually brought to handouts, actually.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll take. Okay, we'll, we'll take the handouts then. If you just want to hand them to Counselor Shank and he can pass them around if you want, George.
This is, this here, there's a letter because I follow every
That's all right. I can give her mine, George. Thanks.
This, this doesn't get recognized here because it's not built into our system records. I got another copy.
Thanks, George.
That's just, so what it is, if it's gross, it's kind of on the hide of a police force. In essence, it is not recognized, it's not built into your record. And if you're guilty or not, if you're trying to satisfy an order for justice, that was possible if you're legally removed from that said meeting.
And that's where the employers.
And George, I think as, as you're probably more than well aware, I'm fairly well-versed in policing within the province of Ontario. So a lot of the comments or a lot of the statements that you've made, there are other avenues in which you can deal with those avenues, right? So I know that there's a complaint process with the OPP, there's the Office of the Independent Police Review Director. There's, there are a number of different options that you can address those things. And if you feel that, that, that you've definitely been wronged.
Oh, 100%.
Then you may want to follow up on those things. But you know, I don't want to make it sound like, but you're sort of outside of the scope of anything we can do. I'll be quite honest with you, George. And, and like I say, having known the system, the way that I do know the system, there are other options to you. So it's probably in your best interest. it's probably in your best interest that if you feel that way, that, that you, you fall off on those. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I have, I've approached you. I, I've approached all the, read the letter that was written to the figurative head of state, I guess. It'll imply that I've been through every one of those avenues and I'm still be, I was still being harassed. Okay. And I have witnesses to everything I say. I have no reason to lie. I'm a law abiding Canadian with no criminal record. I'm a business person. This town and a taxpayer. But because of what's taken place, it's destroyed my ability to maintain my business. It's destroyed my finances. It's destroyed my credit. It's actually destroyed my ability to even provide myself and my family with the basic needs of life. And it's unfair. It's unjust. It's illegal. And why would a man like me have to go through that when I've maintained a law abiding citizenship and a man of the community? Not only that, it's changed people's perspective of me because it looks like I've done something wrong, which I haven't.
And now, and by the sounds of it, you, you do have a lawyer. You have.
No, I don't have a lawyer. Actually, I don't have the funds for a lawyer because I've been put right out of business.
The incident that you related to us earlier about being taken out of a lawyer's office, when did that happen?
That was at John Granger's law firm.
When was that?
Last year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago. Okay.
But what happens though is, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
What happened? And we'll, we'll have to cut this short here shortly because we're outside the three minutes, but go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Well, I wasn't sure. What happens is you, you live in fear because if you know you get taken out of somewhere and you can't satisfy it because it's something illegal on behalf of the authoritative people that are supposed to be the law. And they don't act within the scope of the law. That's a pretty scary scenario.
Yeah. And I, I do know that there are processes, there's a complaint process with, with the Ontario Provincial Police that that is, it's very open, very transparent and very, very thorough, to be quite honest with you, because I know people that have gone through that process. So like I say, as much as I'd like to be able to help you, I don't believe that the venue that you're in tonight is, is the appropriate venue for what you've told us. There are other options for yourself and I hope that, I hope that you take advantage of it, but I just want to thank you for coming tonight. I mean, it takes, it takes a little bit of courage to come here and speak to us.
Not really. Um, if you have those options.
For some it does.
If you have those options, I would love if somebody could send them to me because I would like to go down that avenue because I have had literally no help from any of the authority. If you read the, well, matter, but anyways, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. I appreciate that. Thank you very much, George. We'll look for a motion to note and receive the deputation of Mr. George Rayer, moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments or questions of Mr. Rayer, all in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, George, and good luck, eh? Good luck.
Yeah, you know what? But what I do, what I'm going to do, you'll read that.
Thank you.
I'll end up getting hospitable stuff.
Thank you, George. Thank you, George. Okay, moving on. Adoption of the minutes. We'll look for a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the special session of council February thirteenth, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, moved by Counselor Penau, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. No comments or questions or concerns, all in favor? Opposed, carried. We'll also look for a motion with respect to the regular session of council dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And with that motion moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further questions or comments with respect to that, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for information. I know that we've received a number of correspondence for information previous to, to the meeting. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out of there to have a conversation about? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to receive the items for correspondence for information dated February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, including the addition of the correspondence from communities from in bloom dated February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three be received. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for action, nine point two point one, one billion dollar booster for freshwater health campaign. Everybody has had an opportunity to read it, I'm thinking. I don't know if there's any questions or comments with respect. I, I believe what they're doing, looking for some support with respect to a letter or a resolution of support regarding the freshwater action plan. Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Penau that we move to support the, the information with respect to the billion dollar booster freshwater health campaign, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll look for the vote. All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Proclamation request, be a donor month and green day shirt. Green Shirt Day. We have a recommendation where there's a group in the community of transplant advocate as association whose volunteers are dedicated to support of the pre and post transplant recipients, donors and donor families in to informing the public of the need for organ and tissue donation. And, and there's quite a long proclamation to follow that. Basically, it, it boils down to a green shirt day. And I think the date is, if I'm not mistaken, the seventh of April. So the proclamation that they're looking for is that the town of Greater Napanee hereby proclaims April seventh as Green Shirt Day and the entire month of April to be, be a donor month in the town of Greater Napanee. Look for a motion, Counselor Penau, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any questions or comments with respect to the proclamation? Counselor Shank.
I think, I think it's part of keeping somebody else alive. So that's my own personal viewpoint, but do we have anything else? Because there's so many different proclamations. Is there something else already in April?
I, I, I'm sure we probably do, but I think.
What is the procedure on this?
Sorry. Through your worship, our policy allows for multiple proclamations of the same time period. The only limitation we have is that if multiple organizations want a flag raising for the same month, they share it. So if we got two flag requests for April, they'd split it. They each get two weeks, whichever week is closest to their, any special events they have going on around it. They all go on our website and stay up there for the calendar year. So there's no limit on the number of those we can have up. Okay.
And I know, I know that question got asked the, the last term as well, Counselor Shank, that, that we were getting these things passed in peers for a while and we're running out of days for things, right? So, so we, we had to come up with a policy with respect to if we get three or four a month, we have to share the month with, you know, they have to share it. So. We got a motion. I think we got to move. Moving or secondary. If there's no further comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Do we, Madam Clerk? Committee reports, the Waste Diversion Committee Minutes. We, do we have anybody speaking to this or no? I don't believe so. No? Okay. Well, so we'll look for a motion to note and receive the, the minutes of the Waste Diversion Committee.
So move.
All right. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor. No further comments or questions, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Activity reports, activity report, Infrastructure Services, February twenty twenty-three. I believe that may be Peter, is it? Did you want to speak to that, Peter? Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Is there any questions for Peter with respect to the activity report for Infrastructure Services? Counselor Hicks, I said you want to ask a question?
I do want to ask a question through your worship. Ash trees on municipal property. Ash, A S H, just to be clear for those. What, what is our, how are we proceeding with that? Because I know as they're left standing, they can become dangerous. Are we removing them? Like, or I understand there's some on the trail or the boardwalk along the water. So.
Our three worship staff are removing ash trees, depending on the size. So if it's a, it's a larger tree in a more difficult location, it may be contracted out, but it is an ongoing program that's based on the actual condition of the tree. So if it's a recent, if the, if the tree has just recently quit growing and has died, that was not the highest priority. We'll look for something that is poses more risk.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Shank.
This is an idea. We have some young employees in your department. Is there any way of sending a couple of people that might be interested into going to doing a course of, of taking down a tree, repelling or anything like that?
Three.
Rather than, because we have so many trees and it's quite a cost that maybe we should do that in-house. You know, I mean, if we have some interest in the individuals doing that and they could do that, why not do it in-house? Cause I know my son does it. He learned it and saved us thousands.
Go ahead.
Three worship. So our, our staff are trained, but they won't get into, we don't have a bucket truck. So that does limit our capabilities. And so the, the type of trees we'll stay away from, you know, if we're looking at, say, a larger silver maples in town that are near hydro lines, they're ones we don't, you want, you want to contract those ones out. Our staff do take down a tremendous amount of trees, particularly when we were doing capital prep work. It's, we, we, they'll take down large trees, but it has to be within, within limits.
Thanks. Is there any other questions up here? Seeing none, the activity report from Legislative Services, February twenty twenty-three, and I believe that may be Madam Clerk, is it?
Yes. I have nothing else to add at this time, but.
Is there any questions for Jessica? Seeing none, Financial Services Activity Report, February twenty-eighth. Is there somebody here to speak to that? Or is there somebody here to ask or answer any questions? Should we have any? Thanks Nicole, Nicole Davidson. Is there any questions for Nicole? Seeing none, Emergency Services Activity Report, January, February, twenty twenty-three. And I know that the chief is here.
That's correct. So I'm here to answer any questions based on the report submitted.
Counselor Penau.
Thank you worship. Through you, it's not a question, it's just a statement. Kind of brought this up at our last meeting. Chief, I appreciate that you changed the report. That helps me understand and hopefully helps the rest of council understand the amount of hours that's put into these calls. It was a little hard for myself to, to determine when you say fifty-one calls a month of exactly how many hours is put into those. So I, I appreciate you providing me a report that helps me see the whole picture. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I I'd also like to pass along. So we, just about an hour and a half ago, our recruit course is, is undergoing the, they're in about their eighth week. And half the class responded to a VSA call and saved somebody tonight. So that will be in the next report as well. But yeah, we do appreciate the comments and, and the constructive criticisms at times as well. Thank you.
Great. Any further comments or questions for the chief? Seeing none, the Activity Report for Growth and Expansion, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. And I believe that's Michael. Go ahead, Mr. Nobes. Great. Is there any questions of Michael or comments? Seeing none. And finally, the Community and Corporate Services Activity Report, which I believe Annie can probably answer any questions or comments that we have towards that report. Any questions or comments? Counselor Penau.
Thank you through your worship. Annie, just in the report that you provided under general, I know that you've passed out a map or earlier today to council, but could you just explain to the people listening at home and also to, to us what the park lots, King Street Park in the four point two kilometer urban trail is?
Yes, through your worship to Counselor Penau. So we have a proposed route that would have a trailhead at the base of Snow Road. This would extend along Dairy Avenue to Camden, to King Street, along into King Street Park, then up to Church Street and loop back along the former rail bed as seen in the map provided. And this just shows another viable option or a concept to increase walkability in the town of Greater Napanee. And it responds to some of the concerns that were addressed in the last council meeting.
Great.
That's great. Thank you, Annie. So the pink line, which I see is pulled up for the home, home now, is the route that is being proposed. Looks like majority of, of half of it anyway, will be on the existing sidewalks as it is now. So accessibility is not an issue. Okay. Thank you.
That's correct.
Yep. Yep. Good. Okay. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
I wasn't going to comment too much except when Counselor Penau mentioned sidewalks. There is no sidewalks on that pink route at all. There goes across down church into the graveyard. King Street, King Street has no sidewalks. That's just a comment. I must disclose, I live on King Street and I have, I don't want sidewalks.
Thank you worship. I, I guess where my point was, and I apologize for not knowing the streets of, of, of that area for sidewalks. My point was accessibility. So it's, we're on hardtop. So that's.
I'm just wondering about that. And I'm for trail, trail, the roof. Except I'm concerned about, are we having people walk on their road on the street? They also cross for, I think it's four streets along the way.
Yeah.
Is there any increased liability for the town for?
So.
We possibly might be putting people in danger.
So through your worship to Counselor Martin, this is just a proposed concept that we'll take back to the Recreation Advisory Committee and go over what are potential solutions to some of those issues and what we can do to mitigate those risks.
Yeah, I understand that. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Annie. Is there any other questions of Annie? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to receive for information, all the activity reports, items twelve point one through twelve point six, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments or questions, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Staff report thirteen point one, Infrastructure Services Utilities, Drinking Water Quality Management System, Operational Plan Endorsement, Statutory Standard of Care. We have a motion to move staff recommendation, Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Is there any comments, questions or concerns with respect to that? Counselor Penau, go ahead.
Thank you through your worship. Christie, just reading over your report and I always enjoy reading these reports. I was just wondering like the threat of the intake for the ALDAFO at, at Lake Ontario. We've talked about this for, it came up a few times on last term of council. How it's only fifty meters out and only three meters down. And then when I read the one for the pickup for Santas, it's two hundred and eighty-five meters out and twelve meters down. I'm just wondering, do we see anything in the foreseeable future of putting that on the books to have that extended out any deeper?
Through your worship, at this time, there's, there's no significant threats or concerns noted. We haven't had any water quality, raw water quality concerns at this time. So we do work closely with our conservation authorities and planning around any development in the area and such. So we would be involved in any potential threats that could come up, but at this time, there's been no, no plans to extend the current intake.
Okay, thanks. Maybe I shouldn't have used that word, but it was noted in the report that it, it was, it is under threat. So that's just the reason why I use that. If we read that. But that, that's okay. So my question was answered that there's no foreseeable. So we're okay with it being that shallow?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, I'm sorry. I must confess, I'm not a water expert. I didn't read the whole report from one end to the other, but isn't your major problem is zebra mussels? I know we have a lot because I live along the lake.
There, there is a significant concern with zebra mussels in Lake Ontario. We do have pre-clorination on our intake.
We do have pre-chlorination on our intake pipe that seems to resolve the issues for us.
You don't have a, because I see sometimes the scuba diving guys go down between some of the other, we don't need that because we.
On a regular basis, we do have our intakes inspected and we have them come and do cleaning on, on the intake crib itself. But that, that seems to rectify the issue before it becomes a concern for us for treatability.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? I think we have a second, or do we not, Madam Clerk? So we'll call the question, all in favor. Opposed, motions carried. Thirteen point two payroll system implementation twenty twenty-three. Nicole, do you want to speak to that or? Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Councillor Pennell.
Thank you through your worship. Nicole, I have some questions for you on this, this, this proposal. I guess it's, is it called? What's, what's it called? World or work? Sorry, my notes are all over the place here today. Anyway, my, my questions are if we purchase this system. And down the future, if we go into the enterprise system, is this system that you're asking for now? Is that a standalone system or will it work with that enterprise?
So it would work with an enterprise system. It can interface. Right now, this is acting more of a, of a stopgap. So it would provide some services that we don't currently have internally. It would help make our payroll processes more efficient. And as we moved, or the decision was made to move to a larger ERP, we would then reevaluate to see if we wanted to maintain this piece of software. Or have that all encompassing in a full ERP system.
This is a follow-up.
With Councillor Pennell.
At that point, if we decided not to continue with this program. I see that there's a pretty, to me, it's a pretty healthy yearly contract to have the cloud, I guess, and have our storage. How would we be assured to have our history? Would we still have to continue to pay that amount?
We would work on a migration plan for that data. So we would likely extrapolate that data out and either house it in a warehouse, a storage warehouse of our own. Or actually move that data and migrate it into our, our future systems.
Okay, so that data wouldn't be lost then?
No, it would not. Legislatively, we need to keep that data for, I believe, payrolls fourteen years.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions of Nicole? If not, we have a recommendation that council received for information payroll system. Twenty twenty-three report and further that council approved the purchase of the ADP payroll system at a cost of forty-two hundred dollars plus tax for implementing and an operating cost of thirteen thousand per year. Ahead of council approval of the twenty twenty-three operating and capital budgets moved by. Councillor Hicks, seconded by. Councillor Pennell. Is there any other comments, questions or concerns? Councillor Pennell.
Yes, I'm very sorry, Mr. Mayor. And Nicole, I just have one more question is what is the urgency to have this purchased prior to our budget?
So at this point, with the adjustments in our budget schedule, this could be delayed till our regular budget proceedings. We were intending to actually not act on this immediately. So if, if there was the desire to wait, that would be acceptable as well.
And do we have a delivery time? How, how fast could this be implemented once you receive it?
So we would have to work out project timelines with, with the software provider. I, these, these sorts of implementations can be set up quite quickly. But we would need to adjust our business processes first. So I would probably estimate a, a two to three month window to get that implemented.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other, Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yeah, through your, through your worship, I don't, I don't think we should. Put the cart before the horse before the cart here. I think we should wait until we get our, get down to our budget and bring this back at that time.
Yep, great. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Councillor Hicks.
Through your worship. What are the immediate efficiencies that are going to be gained?
So what would happen with this is we would then be feeding our payroll data to this software as a service essentially. And they would be processing our payroll at that point. So they would be doing all of our remittances to the government, actually processing the payroll piece. So we would be able to shift financial services staff to be a more inward focus and having more value added work.
Okay, so working with senior leadership team on budget management, development, all that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Shank. Am I reading your face right? You have?
Yeah, I, I just, when I pick up a word here and a pick up a word there. So when you say, I'm sorry, Nicole, when you say in-house, all right, that means. Here, you know, or at ninety-nine advanced, the other staff can do more that we might be outsourcing right now. We can do more of that in-house right now. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
So right now we are doing that in-house.
Okay.
That would move to the payroll processing component of that would be done by this software.
I understand that.
Great. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We, oh, sorry, Councillor Norrie.
Yeah, I don't want to defeat this, but I like that you're waiting to the. We get into the budget process. I don't want to, I don't want the term as stand it down or hold, put it on hold, but like, I don't want to say no. And then all of a sudden we got to. It's gone. I have to start over again. I like the process, but I'd like to wait a month if we could. I don't know how. So we got legally how we could do it.
Direct that question to Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Jessica.
Yeah, through your worship, if council does not want to do this right now, you can, you can table the motion, you can vote on it and defeat it. And that doesn't mean this is dead. That just means you're defeating a motion to pre-approve it ahead of the budget.
Now that we have the motion on the floor. Do we have the ability to table it at this point? Or do we need to withdraw the motion in the? Uber and secondary. Your worship, may I suggest something? Go ahead, Mr. Penson. Yeah. Could we amend it simply say pending budget availability? Then if it's in the budget, then it's approved. If it's not, then it's, then it's not. Oh, we could, we could put that line in the budget for this and we'll make sure that it's flagged when we come back to council with the budget. And if it's available, then it's approved. And if not, we can then make other decisions. So if we append the motion, Madam Clerk?
If someone wants to make a motion to amend the main motion to change. That it be approved ahead of council approval for the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three operating budget to say pending approval of the council twenty twenty-three. Operating budget, I think that would get at.
So we will look for a motion that Jessica just explained to append the original motion?
To amend, yes.
To amend. And does that have to come from the mover in a second?
No, that can be from anybody.
So we will look for a motion to amend. Moved by Councillor Shank, seconded by Councillor Pennell. No further comments or questions with respect to the motion to Councillor Hicks.
Through your worship, a question to Mr. Penson. Does the immediate purchase and implementation, so to start. Tomorrow you place a purchase order or you buy the software, you start the training, you develop the processes. How does that impact the service delivery review that's going to take place?
So I think through your worship to Councillor Hicks, we would not, with this resolution, we would not go and buy it. But considering that we think we can fit it in the budget, we would start the planning process such that when we hit the right time, we'd have a project planned, right? People coordinated and all that other stuff, right? So there's some work to do ahead of time to make sure that we execute this properly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we need to vote on the motion to amend. Am I correct?
Yes.
And is everybody clear on what we're voting on? All in favor of the motion to amend? Opposed, that motion to amend is care is.
And then to vote on the motion that has now been amended.
We now need to vote on the motion that we amended. And are we clear what the motion is? And if not, we can get her, Madam Clerk to, to read it out again.
So the motion is now the council approved the purchase of the ADP payroll system at a cost of forty-two hundred dollars plus tax for implementation and operating of thirteen thousand dollars per year. Pending council approval of the twenty twenty-three operating and capital budgets.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't moved in a second or we just need to vote on it. If there's no further comments, questions, all in favor. Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, folks. Thirteen point three, service fees by law review, and I believe Jessica can or will speak to that.
Yes, so through your worship. Staff have since the publication of this report actually changed our recommendation on this. We have through some discussions noticed some additional fees that should maybe be considered within this update. So what we would actually like is that if there's any feedback that it, for anything else that council would like to see, or if you have any concerns about what's already been proposed, that we get that feedback tonight. And we then take another draft back on March fourteenth. That includes some of those. It primarily recreation fees that we wanted to update in, in this year's bylaw. I believe Annie can speak in more detail to some of those changes if required, but our intention would be with council's blessing to, to bring this back again for more discussion at the next meeting with some more revisions.
Councillor Shank.
First one, tile drainage loan inspection fee of three hundred dollars. What is the municipality? I know you take, you do some of the paperwork. But why did you put a fee of three hundred dollars on that? And not, please don't tell me because some other municipality did it.
Through your worship, this is something we don't charge a fee for right now. We are allowed to charge a fee for, and this is the only point in the process where we are allowed to charge an administrative fee. So. Three hundred dollars is what we were told by OMAFRA was standard, but it is certainly, this, this is why we do multiple revisions on this.
Well, I. And how many, may I ask how many active tile drainage loans this municipality has given farmers right now?
So through your worship, none at present. We had not done any for quite a few years. Last year we received an inquiry. So we brought it to council to reaffirm that we would keep running the program, but nothing came of that initial inquiry. So we don't have any present at the moment.
My, my personal opinion is to throw that three hundred dollars out. Next one was, can I continue?
Continue on, yeah.
All right, is the. Yes, we, I understand there's a lot of upkeep in boat ramps and everything else. All right, there was a fee in here of thirty dollars flat fee for the year. Am I correct? That's the way I read it. Annie?
Yes, through your worship to Councillor Shank. So this would be as opposed to boaters paying right now, what is the boat launch fee of two dollars every time they launch? Instead, they could apply for this membership and that would cover for them, them for the entire season for as many launches as they would be looking for.
So the, the concept to a certain degree, I agree with, you know what I mean? Because they're using it so they don't mind, but they're taxpayers, but other people from the other areas coming here to dock their boats also. And of course, there is a, a fairly, I'd like to see a lot of the boat ramps fixed up. Correctly. But how are you going to police us? Because I pay my, not thirty bucks, but I think twenty dollars. All right. And here comes Joe Blow that doesn't have a license, doesn't have a fee. Like who's going to monitor that on a weekend? And what do you, what authority do you have to say you didn't pay? So you gotta, you can't dock your boat.
Through your worship to Councillor Shank, the goal is also to be collecting license plates and that through our membership module that we've implemented. So that way, should it be by law or someone going through the boat launches, they'd be able to check our system to see how many were registered as part of the membership. When it comes to those launching just daily, that would be harder. As you say, we are looking to develop a boat launch. Awareness campaign and a policy around that to hopefully answer some of those questions as well.
So my, my thoughts.
Yep, continue on.
So my thoughts, when, until you have the policy in place to, to enforce, enforce it. Don't start something that you can't enforce because. There'd be nothing worse to get fishermen angry is I docked my boat and I paid twenty bucks and you docked your boat and you didn't pay a thing. And municipality came and they don't have the authority, go ahead and charge you for doing anything.
That's right. I didn't pay a thing because I'm a taxpayer.
So am I. So we're both not paying.
There's no box to collect my.
So you see what I'm saying? You can stir the pot quick. So all I'm saying is, is when it comes to a boat. You know, I mean, the concept I can understand is you would like to generate some revenue.
Go back into.
Get back into the boat launch, but until you have something, unless you want to have Bill sitting on every dock on the weekend. He's going, no, sir, is, I, I don't think we should better go down that road right now.
And we will. Take note of the comments of both yourself and Councillor Hicks, as it seems to be somewhat of a joint submission. Is there any other comments, Councillor, Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yeah, boat launch is number one on my, my radar as well. There's a number of launches around our community, beautiful launches that have no fee to launch. If you want to bring on, you know, try to, try to increase. More people coming to our area, so on and so forth. Let's not nickel and dime them, especially on something that we do not have the availability to enforce. I don't mind the thirty dollar fee for once a year, but when I get off work, go home, have my dinner. Paid my thirty bucks. I come in and I want to launch my boat at the Center Street Boat Launch and I can't because there's no room. Not going to be impressed. So I think for, I think for now, until we can figure out a way of enforcing things and looking after things, I think we should just take that number eight right out of there.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions or concerns with respect to what we're seeing tonight? Seeing none. We'll look for a motion that council. Received the information for the fees for service by law review report and further that council direct staff to bring forward. An update to the fees for services by law in accordance with the recommendations outlined in this report. Sorry.
Sorry, if we could, if it could be that council direct staff to bring forward an updated report to the March fourteenth council meeting, including any fee revisions based on discussions at this meeting.
Sorry, I missed, I missed that. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are we all good with the, the motion? Moved by Councillor Shank, seconded by Councillor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. Noise by law review. Who we have speaking to that? Do we have any? Was that you again, Jessica?
That is me.
Go ahead.
So through your worship, as the report states, we are very early in this process, looking to start off with some public consultation. At this stage, we're just looking for council's initial thoughts on what you see here. And then we will use your comments and public comments to bring a more fulsome list of recommendations to a future meeting. There's any comments or questions, be happy to take them.
Is there any questions or comments for, for Jessica? Councillor Pennell.
Thank you through your worship. Jessica, I see a couple of times in here. I think that for myself, I'd like to see the latter of the time. So the later of the time, say eleven o'clock. Instead of like nine o'clock for operation of a, of a motor vehicle or, or things like that, or any type of noise bylaws typically from what I'm used to is eleven o'clock.
As through your worship, right now, what, what we would like, our goal is to get a schedule to the bylaw that very clearly says before this type of noise, these are your time parameters. It just makes it much clearer from an enforcement perspective. It's a little bit more black and white to say, yes, you were breaking a, a strict rule. So timing, when those restrictions should be in place is definitely one of the things we're looking for feedback on.
Great, thank you. Councillor Shank.
I'm just doing the farmer kick here. Jessica. I'm just doing the farmer kick here. Does it get, when it says here, including noise, vibration, dust, odor and outdoor lighting. I know there's a lot of new people to move in. I know I just, does this give anybody authority to impact when it's planting season?
Absolutely not, because there is provincial legislation that overrules that says any normal farm practice, a municipality cannot prohibit. Nuisance activities related to a normal farm practice.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, through your, through your worship, is there any bylaw for noise as far as discharge of firearms? Is there a time set on?
Through your worship, we currently, I believe, have a discharge of firearms bylaw on the books that. Believe says unless you're a police officer, you shouldn't be discharging firearm at all, but I. Whatever we have, we will make sure it is consistent with this bylaw. I don't want to.
Used to be ten o'clock and I'd like to see that stay there. Thank you.
Through your worship, there's also the fireworks bylaw that will be tied into this as well. And I know that within city limits, there are no discharging of firearms unless you're a. Peace officer of sort. Which part, counselor? I, I said, there is a bylaw that specifically states there is no discharging of firearms within city limits.
Yeah, city limits.
Correct. Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship. To Madam Clerk, how are we obtaining the public feedback on this?
So through your worship, we will have a community engagement page. I believe it is scheduled to go live very shortly. We will promote that through all available channels. And I believe as well, any. People who have been in contact with our bylaw department with respect to noise complaints, we will try to reach out to them directly. Okay, thank you.
Great. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a recommendation that council received for information, the Legislative Services Noise Bylaw Review Report and further that. A draft noise bylaw which incorporates public feedback be brought forward to a future council meeting for consideration. Moved by Counselor Penal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Parking by law review. Is that you as well, Jessica?
Me as well. So through your worship, once again, the same thing, this is a very. This particular review is intended to be fairly narrow in scope, but we're hoping the public feedback we get can be used for longer term future planning. For maybe a broader look at parking down the road. At this point, we are really focused specifically on. Cleaning up any ambiguous language and figuring out what we're doing with the parking lot at this building. And any other specific concerns that may come up through the consultation.
Thanks, Jessica. Is there any questions or comments for Jessica? Counselor Shay.
This is enforcement of parking or parking in handicap places without the handicap sticker. Does our bylaw, if we issue a fine? Do we get that money? Or if an OPB issue that fine, do we lose that money? Does it go to the county?
So through your worship, under provincial legislation, if it is a fine for an accessible parking space. We actually are required to set that money aside in a reserve for accessibility purposes.
Okay, so, but, but if an OPP issues that ticket, then because all our fines go to the county, correct?
Through your worship, I don't know that off the top of my head. I can find out and get back to you on it.
It, I think it depends on which, whether if it's a bylaw, even if it's issued by the OPP, Counselor Shank. It, it's still a bylaw and I think we would maintain that if I'm not mistaken. If, if the, the ticket or the charge is issued under a different statute being Highway Traffic Act. Or another statute, but which is not likely, then that would go into the provincial conference, but as long as it's the. Charge, I believe it's, it's ours.
Through the chair, that is, that is accurate. In our past practice has been just that. When we go out and do our fire route, those funds come right directly back to us. Overnight parking, those funds come right back to us. And I know that when we. Dispense with accessible parking infractions, it has come back to us and I believe the clerk is. Extremely accurate. It gets set aside for other projects within the community.
Therefore, we can, our, our fire chief, they can look after also issue tickets for accessible parking.
That's correct.
So. This evening at dinner. There was a certain location at Walmart where a lot of people were going ahead and not having the proper, so maybe. A fundraising.
So through the chair, pre-COVID, we blitzed all of our locations for fire routes, as you're well aware. And in, in that action, we also caught a lot of folks. Unfortunately, parking in accessible parking where they weren't. Again, if, if you, through the wishes of council, you want us to go out and start enforcing bylaw, we will assist as well.
And just, I, I, I think, I mean, there's probably members, if I'm not mistaken, that of the fire department that are sworn in as by, or as provincial offenses officers. As well as I think there's some of our, our. Our works department are sworn in as provincial offenses officers, if I'm not mistaken, or by law enforcement officers, I guess the better, more appropriate word would be, right?
That's correct in, on both.
Yeah, and, and the reason that those folks are sworn in, the issue of the tickets is really purposes for your, your work. So if you show up in a fire truck and there's somebody perched in a fire line, that's kind of.
That's correct.
The concept isn't necessarily to swear in a whole bunch of ticket issuing people that it's, if you're there and for a purpose, you have that ability to do that. Am I sort of correct?
You, you're, you're accurate, Mayor and Counselor Shank, and, and for the benefit of the rest of council. When we issue fines under the Provincial Offenses Act, we do not see any of that money and that goes directly to the county. So when we start looking at finding for. Fire code infractions, a lot of that money we will never see.
The only reason why, when I heard this. It's very disheartening and I think it's actually. Correct for somebody that is able to walk to park in an accessible. And if we do not help those individuals, that's a reason why. Those places are there for the, for the elderly or anybody that might be imperative anyway. That they get issued there, you know, from their doctor or whatever. And for somebody blatantly to go ahead and not honor that. I would love to issue that ticket. So I just something that we need to, you know, I've heard enough COVID excuses. It's time to. You know, let's go.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments with respect to the, the parking bylaw review? Counselor Penal.
I think you worship, I just want to make a comment in regards to, to this building. And what we'd be doing with the staff only parking is that. I'd like to see that the Market Square Advisory Committee have some kind of a comment on that. However, I'm not sure of the timeline of how that would hold up this bylaw. If I could ask Madam Clerk, what would we be looking at for a timeline as of tonight before we would even be able to vote on a new bylaw?
Through your worship, this is going to take. I, I want to make sure we take enough time with this that we do it well and we don't come back and make another revision a couple of months down the road. So. I think that's a fair comment and we can build that in. If there's other review work. As, as I mentioned previously, we want to make sure our signs match what's in our bylaw. So if there's any places where there are signs and they're not in the bylaw, we want to go look at all of those and see if we can find out why. And if that sign is just appropriate, so that work. I, I think there's enough time for the committee to meet and discuss this.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a recommendation that council received for information. The Legislative Services Parking Bylaw Review Support Review Report. And further that council direct that an update to the parking bylaw which incorporates public feedback be brought forward to a future council meeting. With considerations moved by Clerk Penal, seconded by Counselor Martin. There's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Bylaws fourteen point one by law number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one seven, appoint an interim treasurer. But we have a bylaw before us to appoint an interim treasurer, that being Nicole Davidson is hereby appointed interim treasurer for the Corporation. Town of Greater Nappany effective February twenty, February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Look for a motion moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Penal. If there's no further questions, we'll look for first, second, final reading. All in favor? Opposed? Scary. New business. Does anybody have any new business that we're not aware of? I don't know. I don't think, believe we have anything on the books at this point. Do we, Madam Clerk? Counselor Shay.
Sorry. We have to think outside the box when it comes to business. All right, we always have to change and ball with the times. When I was going through some of the budget numbers of the last that were given to us quite some time ago, I was just thinking, now what would I do if I owned this? For the amount of aggregate that we use and for what, you know, Thompson and some of the other quarries that we are currently using. All right, they're depleting. The cost of aggregate is going up extremely high. All right, it's only going one way. Up in Selby Mines, we own, I think I've heard between fifty to seventy acres up there. It's all on limestone. So. I know you're supposed to ask for permission first, but I would love nothing better if we could go ahead and start the proceeding to get our own gravel pit. So we can crush our own. It's all on limestone. A lot of other municipalities have their own. But all I'm saying is just look into feasibility of saving costs that if you have, when you have all the limestone and we can't crush it ourselves. And we have the expertise, expertise to run. Dumps and this and that and every other water, like why not throw one more? If I can get aggregate at half the price, all right, and we have East Street and some of the others in model road construction that we need to do. Why are we not having our own when stone mills and a lot of other places are having it? And I mean, up in Hungerford, up on Marlberg Road, there used to be a sand pit that we used to get sand from also. All I'm saying is, is let's just think outside the box. I know if we've got the limestone, why aren't we doing it ourselves? I don't care why we weren't, but let's look in the feasibility of doing some of these stuff in-house. We can do it cheaper. And way we go. I know there's probably a long process and it's a probably. But. For the amount of gravel we're going to use, this way we can save half our costs and we have our own gravel. You need three eights or five eights or, you know, or three inch or shot rock or whatever. You know, way we go, bum, rather than paying for, you know what I mean? Retail end.
It's, it's kind of a novel concept and. I, I think this is going to be a long-term type of thing. I mean, we, not being well-versed in inquiries. But knowing farewell that you need some very specialized equipment to run quarries, needing crushers and, and then there'd be all kinds of permits and stuff like that. Deputy Mayor Calver.
Through your, through your worship, we're very fortunate to where we live. The limestone we have here is absolutely perfect for road building and we have multiple companies right within. Arms reach that do that specialized blasting. And we have companies right here in Newburgh that pull in. They do the crushing and they pull out. So they leave you with, you know, a hundred ton or two hundred ton or however much rock you want to tell them you want to stock. And they crush it, separate it, the whole nine yards and out they go. And then you've got it at your availability to load it in your dump trucks with your loaders. Off you go. So it's cost-wise, it's not really out of line. If we had to have them travel five, six, seven hours to crush, yes, or if we had to buy our own crushers, for sure, but we're lucky where we are.
I, go ahead.
The reason why I'm saying this is because as a farmer, if I have limestone on my property, I can crush it long as I use it on my own property. All right. And I know other farmers in, in our geographical town of Greater Nappany that have their own quarries and that's what they did. Back then it was Frank Bagan came in blasted, got another guy come in, went ahead and, and they crushed it the way they went. And when you worked it out, it was like instead of so much a ton, it was substantially cheaper to do it ourselves. All right. And other municipalities are doing as well. I'm saying is I know this is something that's not going overnight, but if we don't start thinking. Of other ways that we can possibly do it, then that's why I'm saying, I'm not saying we ask to be done tomorrow, but I mean, let's start through that process, find out what your. What your higher costs are and how can we do that job? You know what I mean? Maybe a little bit more efficiently. Can, what can we do in-house? What we can't do in-house? You know what I mean? And if it works out that, hey, you know what? It's going to cost me a hundred thousand dollars to make a million, then. There we go, you know?
I, I mean, I guess, I guess we're talking about new business and under new business, we have urgent time since the matters added to the agenda at the time of the agenda's adoption. With the support of two thirds of majority of council. I am, I'm not. Even going to suggest that I am very well versed in, in quarries. But what I do know is, is that this is something that probably is going to take a vast amount of research and a vast amount of. Sourcing by staff. What, and I'll take some direction from Madam Clerk is that if good. Entertain a noticed emotion or a motion for staff to. Investigate or look at that. I'm not so certain we're in the right category under new business. Are we, Madam Clerk?
Through, through your worship, procedurally, new business items should be added before the agenda is adopted. However. Two thirds majority council can relax its rules of proceeding if it wants to consider this right now. Council does speak by resolution. So if you, there is a desire to direct staff to do some work to investigate this proposal, that should be done by way of motion. Rather than just general discussion in the room.
Okay, so I think we know the rules of engagement at this point. I guess what we could do is entertain a motion if you wish for staff to investigate the possibilities of. Operating or. Running a quarry, I guess, depending, I guess, if somebody wants to make that motion, the second we put it on the floor, we'll need two thirds of. Council to accept. Is that, am I right with that?
You need two thirds of council to say, yes, we want to talk about this right now. And then you need. To, it is procedurally an extra step, but yeah.
Can I?
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Shay.
Can I ask John or Peter, you know, the doability or feasibility or, because I mean, if they're saying. I'm too swamped right now. Give me a month. You know what I mean? Like then that'll be.
So if I may, through your worship, you know, the first things that come to my mind is you are, you can, you could, would you be potentially competing with local business? You know, does the municipality want to get into a line of business that municipalities are not generally, you know, we can do some superficial work. I would suggest until we get budgets done and some organizational stuff sorted out, that it would sort of. Maybe come down lower. I put it off until later on in the year, considering it's not a priority, but it's something we can look at. Through this year.
Yes, so. So the point is, is there's a ton of business, but Thompson is a huge, a huge operation. All right, so. Where we get gravel and the volume of the gravel we're getting and what's the lifespan of those areas? We're going to be going further and further a, a, a field to get that Lafarge. You know what I mean? Any of the aggregates that we are currently getting, quote me if I'm wrong, Peter. All right, that those, those areas are going. So I'm thinking kind of outside the box. All right. How can I, instead of paying, you know, nine dollars a ton or whatever, if I can get it, if I can do it. I'm not saying we're going to get into the business of selling gravel. All I'm saying is I, we can't do that. What I want to do is for the model road construction that we need to do and what you see the roads are. If I can, the cost, the taxpayers, three dollars a ton, all right, rather than nine dollars a ton. And for the amount of tons we go through and there's substantial savings. Well, that's six dollars is a whole lot cheaper than the three, you know, nine dollars. Well, that's six dollars is a whole lot cheaper than the three, you know, nine dollars cheaper. If I can do it for three instead of nine, then hey, why not, why not do that? We're rather, I think it's easier for Jeff to go ahead and tell one of the guys to say, hey, we're gonna need two loads of five eights or whatever, and it's after hours or whatever. You're tired of shipping or you need some clean stone or whatever, the way you go. So that's what I, I just want them to, you know, go through the process. They, they deal with the quarries all the time and the quarries act, you know what I mean? And, and see if it's even feasible. That's all.
Counselor Pinal.
Did you want to go first?
No, 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 that's right. I, I got an opportunity to go over here, so.
I think you, your worship, I just have some comments on it. I just looked up that property that's in, in Salby's a hundred and two acres. My issue with that particular location, not necessarily against the, the concept of having our own gravel, if we have our own resources from, uh, from a property that's zone mineral extractions, but in, in Salby, in this particular piece of property, we very close to it, we have a public school. We have, uh, this property, uh, goes behind some residential houses. And we've had a great pushback on, from, from this little community for a tower and, uh, and some noise complaints, all right, um, pushbacks from a company that's gone into the Salby area. Um, and, and things that we're gonna have to do with Burms and there's future stuff that we have, are gonna have to deal with. I just think, um, the concept is there, the location isn't.
Thanks, Counselor Pinal. I guess. And I, I just, I, I want to speak to it procedurally, is that this is something I don't think that we can deal with overnight and we can't deal with it tonight, obviously. So what I'll suggest is, is that maybe, um, in the not too distant future is if we want staff to look at the feasibility of, of either acquiring a quarry or running a quarry, that we can do it by resolution, uh, notice the motion, motion. And, and have it brought back, uh, in the future to take a look at it, if it's still, uh, it's still something that we want to do. Like I say, we, there's no sense in talking about tonight because we're just gonna go around in circles and circles and circles, right? Because we have a bunch of people sitting here that, that really aren't all that knowledgeable. So, um, I will entertain if somebody wants to do a motion tonight. If we want to do a noticed emotion or if you want to, uh, to sit and think about it and then we can come back, we can always, uh, come back and, and, and send something to Jessica with respect to a noticed emotion at the next meeting. Um, I, I'm at your, I'm at your mercy at this.
I'll make a notice motion that, you know, we can't discuss it after this anyway, but notice a motion that, uh, is maybe not so much that location, but somewhere in this municipality that we currently own, all right? The feasibility of having our own aggregate that we can save, all right? There's other quarries that I know that are probably could be very easily purchased. All right, that are, all right, that one time a quarry. Uh, so all I'm saying is, is
Notice the motion to
Look at, look at.
Feasibility of.
Feasibility of creating our own.
The wording I have is that staff be directed to investigate and report back to council regarding the feasibility of establishing a municipal quarry operation for internal aggregate use.
Yes.
So that will be printed on our next agenda then for.
And, and you know, and they're, they're gonna go through, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Jessica, also that they look at, investigate, okay? Uh, if Salby, if there's a big pushback on the hundred and two acres, that's a lot of acres when you consider the other quarry just down here past Hamburg. There's, it's right beside, right behind the house, you know what I mean? A hundred and two acres is quite a large chunk of land. But the point is just to have them look at all the different areas that we could possibly, where we can save money, all right? And I, I believe there's one area that you could.
Okay, and so we're good with the most emotion, uh, Madam Clerk?
It will be printed on the next agenda.
Yep, uh, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dafel.
I was well aware of that one also. And we have location that we currently already have on a certain road. All right, and it'd be, it would be acquiring property. So that's the reason why I can't do it in the whole session. But, uh, you know where there's one artery currently there. I mean, I don't know what it would cost to go ahead and do one right beside it. And if you went ahead and looked at that, you know, in our notice of motion, that he kind of bring that report back also where we can save. Cause I know getting rid of the soils in the snow is going to be is, is major saving because it was mentioned also on history.
Okay, well, we'll do it by notice to motion. We'll bring it back at the next meeting for, for, for the motion itself and, uh, and we'll go from there. Okay. Uh, if there's no other new business, we do have noticed emotions. And I believe that, uh, we have a motion that was introduced by Counselor Norrie on the fourteenth of February, twenty twenty three.
Yes, before I put that forward, I think and I might withdraw it and I'll tell you why. After some discussions, everybody's been positive about changing hours. But it has affected farming in certain times like that, that hour, family life for a couple. So I think if we just withdraw it and let council talk among themselves, maybe they'll come back with a better hour because I can't see putting a note or a amendment for an hour here, an hour there. Just like count, like you, you know, the thinking, I think most are positive with it. Let's let council talk among themselves. Come back in a month or so when they think they know the hours at work around everybody's schedule, or they don't have to drive home the next day. As some of them do and give it a try, but all withdraw it right now. The seed's been planted and let's just, uh, let, let everybody's talk among themselves and we come back to staff and with our recommendation or whatever.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Do we, we don't need anything for that. We just withdraw it. Great, thank you. Statements by members. Do any members have any statements? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to just, just publicly thank our, uh, our plow crews we have. We seem to get these pop up storms like this that dumps on us and, uh, do an amazing job of what they do. My plow guy in particular, every time I see him plow, it just, it amazes me the talent that these guys have with these big trucks, uh, to go in and around stuff. And I'd just like to say thank you for doing a great job.
This year, I think they've been busier probably than they have in, 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 in future years. So, um, we just seem to get a whole pile of snow and then it goes away and we get a whole pile of snow again. So it's just like starting all over again. So, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the nice words. So uh, is there any other statements by members? Seeing none.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Shank.
I just hate the labor things, but, uh, December twenty fourth, we had a major, uh, snowstorm. All right, there's gonna be, there's some, uh, there's quite a few costs. Under the emergency act, are we be able to reclaim any of those funds that were expended because we had snow plows, we had, we had tow trucks that were pulled out. There was quite the cost there. All I'm saying is I'd like to have, you know, see what we could get back in, under the emergencies act that we had declared an emergency. Can, can we get some of those funds back? You know, because what I've heard some of the bills that would, would have to be paid. It's gonna affect the budget.
So through your worship, if I may, there's a funding formula that's based on the year's budget. What we would have spent normally, it's a very small percentage. Um, we can look into it, but I don't know that we qualify.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Chief. C A O remarks.
Uh, just one thing, your worship, uh, it was in the activity report for community and corporate services. We brought this up once before that. People have told us that our website is less than user friendly. Some people say it sucks. We are putting some, we are doing some work on that. We are in the process of building a consultation page for the community to ask the community what they're looking for in terms of a digital platform. So we're going to do that through this year to get to a point where we have a website that is much more user friendly and responds to the community.
Great, thank you. Um, the forward calendar, we've all had an opportunity to look at the forward calendar. Is there any comments or questions with respect to it? Seeing none. We'll look for a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the town of Greater Nappany. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks, read a first, second and finally passed. All in favor? Opposed, motions carried, motion for adjournment. By Counselor Pinal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. All in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thanks, folks. And I know uncharacteristically, we're done before ten o'clock, but hopefully we'll make it a trend. Thank you very much. Good night.